All right, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting into order. You can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries is absent.
If you could see, please rise and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up is, I'll make a motion to approve the September 24th, 2019 Board minutes. If I could have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Is there any discussion? Matt in color roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to Special Reports, Mr. Bealus.
Mr. Wayne, I just want to give a quick update about what's going on in the new buildings.
Right. Right now, everything's going real smooth. We're getting the plowing contracts are finally finished. We're also having a company come out and taking care of the sidewalks. So that'll be taken care of during the summer. The ballistic glass has been a little bit of an issue to make sure it's being cleaned properly, but that is something that's under control. We have a system in place of how they're going to be taken care of so we don't damage that glass. And it's a real easy system. It's just a matter of water and microfiber cloths, but we just didn't want anybody going out there and using window spray or anything else on these. So that's taken care of. Other than that, right now, we're getting ready for the winter over there. We've been having a lot of training sessions, and I spoke with Mr. Reed this morning. They went to a meeting today and things are coming along pretty well. I think the one big thing they're looking at, how we're going to see that system in the morning with those two buildings, but that's something that we're working on right now. And they're having plumbing timed, different kinds, and we're sending the maintenance guys over to get trained. And that's what we're doing, so.
We also had our monthly meeting also with Icon yesterday, and we're just going through our punch list now, getting organized, making sure we're all in the same page of what needs to be completed.
So when Mr. Easely was here last month, he mentioned that there was a walk-through with the architect plan? Is that something that's still in the future, or did that actually happen?
Well, the direct architect for that is Tracy, and she's been through the building on a regular basis. Architects, the original architects from Fane and Howie have not been through the building yet. I specifically asked.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't been through it, which I find kind of odd because it is up and operational and they haven't come through yet.
Right. And what Mr. Easely talked about is the final kind of punch list from the architect's perspective as well.
Yes, well, yeah, from also our employees and also from Icon.
Right, right. I mean, there's several punch lists, I'm sure. Hopefully a lot overlapping, but not necessarily.
Right, some are going to be easier, more easily remedied than some others, too.
Yeah, there's a few things still coming in, like the garage door to the community center and the lockers for the fifth grade that are coming in next month and, well, this month should be installed, hopefully in time for the community open process.
Thanks, Dan. That's all.
Okay. That takes us next to old business. If anybody has anything? New business? All right. Then to Board of Education Committee and Liaisonate Reports, first thing up is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. There's a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. at Riverview. There'll be an update next month then after that. Mr. Miley, Curriculum and Programming and Boosters.
Okay, curriculum and programming. We had a meeting with Melissa over curriculum and programming on October 16th. We talked about graduation data, Phase Two, enrollment sizes of the buildings. Let's see, we talked a little bit about the instructional plan that we would like to see in the new building if we ever get there. And just kind of discussed the wish lists and tried to get a better understanding of that. With regards to the boosters, I missed that meeting, but I do have these beautiful notes that, right now, they seem to have been talking about getting their finances in order from closing out last year's funds, moving them over. The ones that, like the Haddon, Hale, Madison, and Leroy, certain percent of the monies followed the students to split up what was left over. The Parkside and Riverview, they're working on getting, what, their certification?
Like properly renamed and, you know...
And tax exempt and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then they took, discussed a little bit about different fundraising options because trying not to be doing the same things in all the buildings, so. They got a lot of good things cooking, and the next meeting's going to be December 3rd.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. Mrs. Grassi, Finance, Audit, Personnel, Strategic Plan.
Okay, so we had a Finance and Audit meeting last week, and we had a visitor, we had Mike Persala come in and talk to us about some, an opportunity for bond refinancing, which I'm not going to, I'm not going to really discuss it too much because Gary is going to go over that later in his treasurer's report, but it was an interesting conversation and something that the Finance and Audit Committee can get behind 100%, I think. And so we'll just let him discuss that momentarily. And then the Strategic Plan, we had had a meeting previous to this meeting, but we haven't had one since, so. Wait till you guys have a consensus on when we want to meet again or when we have, want to have another phone conversation, where you guys have gotten further along and what it is that you want to present as far as strategic plan updates. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Heck, Buildings and Grounds, Operations, Alumni.
So we did not have a Buildings and Grounds meeting in the last month, but obviously you got a little bit of an update earlier.
It's going to be the first time in a very long time.
It's the first time in a very long time.
All right.
But we will, just in case people are wondering, we will have one in November, so. But I did attend a number of meetings associated with the Alumni Association, attended their monthly meeting, and just a couple highlights there I think are important. The duck race still exists, even though we don't have the betta of Painsville anymore, and through selling the ducks and other things, they raised $4,300, which is good, so the scholarships will continue. And I also attended the Hall of Fame Dinner, Riverside Hall of Fame Dinner, on Saturday, where we inducted six additional people to the Hall of Fame, and it was a terrific event. And it's always a challenge to have those things actually make a profit, and I'd like to do a shout out to my former guidance counselor, Mayor Jane Watson, who did a great job of organizing this, and it really was a nice event. We had three people, three athletes, and then three people who have done things in the community since their time at Riverside who were inducted. So it was really a very nice event. Glad to have been there and enjoyed it very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Jeffries is not here, but as far as policy goes, do you have anything that's, any updates on policy? Okay. We'll move on from that. That takes us to the Superintendent's Report, Mr. Bealus.
A few things. Number one, I did ask for an update about the band bleachers from C.T. Consultants. They were successful in receiving a variance to build the stands. I believe that was on October 8th that they presented before the zoning board of appeals. And it's my understanding that some of the steel will be coming in in early to mid-November, and I believe they can still start working on it even throughout the cold weather. So that's what I have for you. And I'm hoping that the stands are in by next football.
You me both.
We got a lot of the band director, we have the band director here and also the second, third directors as well. Thanks for being patient. You know, it's not the easiest thing, putting folding chairs out there. We didn't want to get the rentals, it was too expensive, and plus the rentals weren't always that good either. But once these things are established and built, they will have a good place to be. I do appreciate the, the parents have been great, too. They've had a lot of patience. Want to pass out? Some statistics I want to share with the board. I don't know if the board remembers, about a year and a half ago, we received a Striving Readers Grant, and it generates about a little over $500,000. It was a grant that was applied to, by Perry and also Fairport Harbor. And it gives us the ability to reach out to kids in our district that have maybe fallen through some of the gaps that we have in some of our instruction. And we started a program at the high school with 10th and, ninth and 10th graders, and we identified some students that were the most at risk at graduating. And we started out with 15 students in ninth grade and 15 students in 10th grade. And what this program does is helps create a personalized program to help students navigate through their high school years, not only academically, but also they help them with other types of guidance throughout the day. Some of these students had high absenteeism. They have not been successful in terms of their academics, and those are two areas we wanted to concentrate on with this particular program. Through the grant, no school monies used for it, but through the grant, we were able to hire a student success coordinator, and that person is Kathy Babcock. You remember her, she was also our swim coach that was here. And even though she presented for a very short time, you could tell that she cares very much about her athletes and also the kids in our school. She also helps during a guided study hall that we provide our kids, and she helps manage student plans and goals throughout this year. We're also going to start also helping students with work experiences. We're first going to start around the school and then possibly move outside of the school out into the community, but we want to start with the work experience inside. But if you look at the, if you look at the chart that I passed out, in ninth grade, the average GPA before this program for these particular students was 1.55. And the total missing blocks among these students was over three, was 351 blocks that they were absent. Now, if you look at 2019, the average GPA right now because of this program is 2.76. Yeah, and they're only, they've only missed 203 blocks. The 10th graders, there's 15 students also that are part of this program, their average GPA was 1.28, and they missed 411 blocks of school before this program, and in 2019, this quarter, they only missed 211, and their GPA went up a little bit at 1.56. I, we're kind of in the honeymoon phase of this program. What we're doing is looking at more data to drive what we do with the program, but it is promising as you can see. Even with the most improved part of that chart, you're going to see that one ninth grader went from .66 grade point average to a 2.71.
Holy mackerel.
Yeah, and the 10th grader had a 0.0 and went up to a 1.83. Those were the most improved, too, from each of the grades.
That's fabulous.
Yeah, it is. So it's working out pretty well. We have very effective teachers working with these kids, and they're, they're, they have a couple core courses that they work through. For the ninth grade, it's English that they do and math, where they're all together, and also biology. They don't track throughout the whole day altogether. They have some regular classes, too. I just want to share that with the board.
That's great.
Also, I think last year, we were talking a little bit about where our students go after they graduate from school. I have some more information here as well. We go back three years to 2017. I just wanted to share with the board, in early May, we sent a survey out to our, second exit survey out to our seniors through an ambiance, and we wanted to ask the students what plans they had for after graduation. And as you can see in this, this chart here, we have, we had 295 students in 17, 305 in 18, and 340 in 2019. And you can see that the majority of the students plan on going to a two- or four-year college. Now, those stats are kind of misleading because there's a lot of ways you can get to school. You know, one of the more important questions is, is whether or not they have gone through the program or obtained some type of degree, some type of skill through those programs. But for right now, I do have a number of students that plan on going to college. Now, Career Bound, we only have kids in the teens for Career Bound, and undecided, class of 2017 or '24, '25 in 2018, and '27, 2019. And one of the questions we also wanted to answer is how many CCP credits were earned at RHS? That does not represent only seniors, that represents anyone that is taking it at the high school. We could probably break that information out to see how many students take it in each of the grade levels. As you can see, there's a slight decrease from 2017. What I could surmise in talking to the guys is there's two things. Number one is, I think, from what I understand, the entry exams seem to be getting a little bit more difficult, is what we're hearing from the kids, or at least that's what they're saying. And the other thing is, we've been offering a little bit more flexible instructional opportunities for our kids inside of school, too, which may lead them not to want to go out and pursue college credit, when they can get college credit through AP classes. And also have the full-time and part-time numbers as well. Just wanted to share those numbers with...
If I could just echo something. So, so my daughter graduated from Riverside in 2018, and I had a conversation with her, and she was able to apply a lot of the AP classes, just to dovetail with what you're saying, and have that applied to her college. And now she's potentially in a situation where she can actually potentially graduate after her junior year. But the, the point being that there are many ways, whether it's CCP or AP or whatever, there are a lot of different ways that people, you know, students can, can earn credits that are, you know, the more we do, the better it is to enhance the school reputation.
And we've been talking to some of the kids. Some of the kids do not want to leave school, they still want to have that high school experience. So they can still get college credit by taking AP classes and scoring well on the AP exams. And then some that will take classes, you know, a couple out in, out in Lake, Lakeland or Lake area or wherever, and still take AP classes here if they would like to. Some kids will take AP classes when we take the exams, though, either. We don't understand why they don't do that when you go through a rigorous program like that. Take a shot at it, at least. I'm going to end with a PowerPoint presentation, and before I ask Mr. Schwartz to come up here and present to the board, I received a proposal from the band department on October 10th about some ongoing issues that we've been having with uniforms, also with our band trailer, our raincoats. These are discussions we've had with the band program for probably the last two, three years, Mr. Schwartz?
Right.
Only more regularly. And with as many kids as we have in the band, it's very expensive to replace this equipment. So Mr. Schwartz and the band boosters gave us a proposal, which is, I consider very generous. And I want him to step us through this proposal so the board understands what they're going to do for our students and what they're asking of the board's education. In a nutshell, the whole amount is over $234,000, and they're willing to pay for 82% of that cost. Want to come up?
Sure. So, okay, if I go right here? Please, I pop up there? So I just want to give you a brief history of the current uniforms that we have. We purchased those in 2004, the first year they hit the field, because there is a big down button. Awesome, thank you. The, there is a lead time to get these uniforms, since they're all handmade, especially for us. So they were put in service in the 2005 season. The uniforms previous to that were almost 18 years old and literally falling apart. I mean, literally, they would come off if you have fallen apart. These are getting close. Pants are frayed, coats are showing everywhere, especially places that get rubbed a little bit, the shoulders, I just found this out the other day, shoulder areas, they're actually having, it's frayed so bad, they're having to take black markers to color the plastic that's in there to hold the shape so that you can't see it on the field. So those are some of the things. It's just a, it's a constant, oh dear, I'd like to, it's a constant battle. Before performance, we have uniform moms there an hour before each game to try and help manage this. They're sewing after games, they're sewing on weekends and such, so things are really, really beginning to fall apart. The uniforms that we are dealing with are, there's two types of band uniforms, are fully constructed and semi-constructed. Basically, what we're doing is a fully constructed uniform, full, they hang nicer. The other uniforms are, the semi-constructives are kind of termed as throwaway uniforms, where they, you wear them for a year, two years, and have to replenish them. That becomes very expensive as well, but I mean, we could, you know, tackle this project in, you know, probably a tenth of the cost, but we're going to do it every few years. So we're looking at a very, very heavy-duty kind of uniform. Right now, we started with 300 uniforms, and we look at that in terms of sizing issues. We have about 200 kids in the band right now. We can't size 200 kids with 200 uniforms. 300 is, is a good place to be for the size. I looked at, we've been around the 200 mark, give or take, five or 10 kids for the past seven, eight years. We've kind of been holding steady there. Our largest year, and this was probably 15 years ago, we topped out at like 220, and 300 would still cover. In 2009, with the pipe burst over Hill Road, so we lost a few, lost some jackets, some breastplates, and some pair of pants and such. We recently disposed of, you can see there's clearly a pair of pants, 10 coats, three breastplates, we just, these couldn't use them anymore, they were beyond use. Currently working with threw-off uniforms. They're the manufacturer of the uniforms that we currently have. There are basically three manufacturers in the country that do these types of fully constructed band uniforms. And we started with them just because that's what we currently have. We've gotten a bid, and you can see a little bit about them and who they've worked with. We've gotten bids from all three companies, the band boosters and the Uniform Committee and ZPD Committee actually went through the uniforms and tore them apart. I mean, literally ripped them apart. We had an 80-point thing to look forward, well beyond my scope of knowledge in terms of sewing issues and how things are put together to, you know, pick the current uniform that we like. Of the three companies, one of them didn't even come remotely close to the standard that we would be looking for. The other two were fairly close. The threw-off, I believe, was the better of the uniforms, and it came in slightly cheaper than the other one anyways, so. So again, we're looking to purchase 300 uniforms again. This would cover some growth in the regiment with, over time, cover sizing issues. We're looking at about $630 apiece for uniforms. It's not like we're buying an $80, you know, I can say jersey, because I know my son plays baseball, I know the baseball jerseys were eight bucks for the summer, just the jersey, one of them. This is considerably more, more money. I looked, I think the last time we purchased these, 15 years ago, they were about $370 apiece. So you can see the, you know, the inflation cost there. It includes everything in a uniform. The thing that's not included in that price would be the braids that we have, and you can see that later. So there's a breakdown of the costs when you look at it. Uniforms were almost $190,000. Raincoats. The raincoats is as big of an issue right now, if not bigger, than the uniforms themselves. The raincoats that we have right now were purchased in 1992. That actually shocked me as well. I knew they were here when I started here, and I started at the high school in 1997, was my first year in high school. So, I mean, these raincoats are 37 years old, and it's no wonder when you put them on, any of them, that they smell like really bad, really bad. Maybe in 2000, I said really bad, I meant really bad. Somewhere in the early 2000s, we purchased a few more raincoats as the band was growing to help cover. We currently own approximately 220 raincoats. I, I'm not sure of that number, I was scrambling to kind of find it. It's right around 220, which is an issue, because there's 195 kids on the field that would need raincoat. We take eighth-grade Band-Aids and try to get them covered in case it rains with us, and then, you know, the adults try to have raincoat as well. So we're, we're pushing the limits here. We did recently have to dispose of a few of those raincoats. The raincoats are being, not just the smell, but in bad shape. We had them re-waterproofed in, I think it was 2015, I'm pretty sure that that was the time. And, yeah, it didn't work. It worked for about a year, and they don't repel water at all. It literally, as soon as it gets wet, it just soaks in, soaks right on through. There's been lots of times, you know, kids go home and they're, they're wet all the way through eight layers, okay? The mold, they'll do, again, we just had to throw a bunch of them away because of, just, I mean, you just can't give them to a kid. So here's a breakdown of our proposal. New uniforms being about $190,000, the braids, we, guests making $8.95 apiece, we'd probably get a price break on that because that was, we haven't bought them in 15 years. I would imagine buying 300, they'd probably get a little bit cheaper, but that was the list price online. New raincoats included a bid from the companies, just at $28,000. And then we come to the band trailer. I'm sure we're all aware of issues with band trailer. We've been using the trailer as it sits now, along with a school bus. The problem with using a school bus is we had to take off all of the big instruments off of the trailer to meet the transportation weight requirements for the trailer. That means we're putting the two buses up in the bus, we're putting all the big rugs, some of the ladders, all the big stuff up in the bus. It's physically very demanding on the kids. Along with that, it's tough on the bus drivers because they don't want to see their buses damaged. Sometimes kids hear about that. And as well as that, we don't want to damage a bus. We would think we would get the old buses. It doesn't work that way. The buses get assigned, like, I don't know how that works, I would assume, I think it's by seniority, and that bus is there, that's the one that's used for equipment. Sometimes we've had some really nice buses that were throwing big cases on, kids are trying to be as careful as they can. I don't think, not going when we've damaged a bus yet, but it's, it's going to happen. So we're obviously looking for a new trailer, a little bit bigger trailer. We have a 24-foot trailer right now, we're looking at a 28-foot trailer. More importantly, we're looking at bigger axles to go underneath it to support the weight diminution. We now have a truck in the district that can pull something like that, so that $10,000 is an approximate cost. When you start looking at trailers, it could be worse than looking at cars. There are so many options and stuff available. That is approximate, I talked to two different places, along with doing a lot of web searching. We couldn't get that number exact until we would know, talk to transportation, see what exactly what they would want, what weight requirements they would want, what weight requirements, tongue weights for the trailer for the truck and stuff like that. That's a pretty close estimate. And then we got an estimate to have it wrapped, the outside, they don't really paint those vehicles anymore. The one we have now has stickers on it, which have lasted quite a while. I know the backside of the trailer was redone some years ago. Just to give you an idea, the trailer we're using now is physically okay, under my understanding, it's just the weight issue. And that trailer is about 22 years old, I think, 122 years old. So when you're looking at investment, you know, hopefully, barring any accidents as such, it should make it down the road quite some time. So, and then our proposal would be, the band boosters had foresight when we purchased uniforms last time, to create what they called the Uniform Sustaining Fund. Each year, they try to set aside so much money, and that might be one of the reasons there's rumors out there that the boosters have all this money. It's true, until we spend $200,000 of it here in the next little bit of time. And it was purposeful saving, knowing that this was coming down the road here. So our, the band boosters have graciously offered to pay, you know, $191,000, almost $192,000, asking the board to contribute just shy of 43, yeah, just shy of $43,000, so.
We'd like the board to consider it, we'd like to place it on the November board agenda.
That is really impressive.
First question, so. First-class band needs first-class equipment?
Thank you, yeah.
I have a few questions, I just was thinking about this. Before we head to turf and march through the mud and everything else, do you need to have the sets of dry cleaners?
Yes.
How much would that cost?
I'm not sure what the dry cleaning costs. Typically, the Bamboosers dryclean them before, or at the end of each season. If a kid would get it to the point where we need dryclean during the year, we would ask them to do that. Typically, the mud, because of the construction uniforms, let it dry, it brushes off pretty well. I think...
It's like twenty, it's like twenty bucks.
I was going to say, I was going to say fifteen, twenty dollars per uniform.
If you take it to the preferred dry cleaner, and most students will take those and get those dry cleaned at least once, because they do start to...
They do start to smell after a while, too. And they have to be drycleaned at a certain spot to hold the warranty. The dry cleaner actually provides us with paperwork saying that they're going to dryclean it a specific way and...
Who manages that?
The dry cleaner is, has been premier drycleaning.
I mean, who manages the plan, the order? Like, you know, out here, in order for us to maintain our warranty with the turf, we have to groom it a certain amount of times and...
Right. I don't think that there would be an issue unless there would be some damage, and then we would have to prove to the company, you know, here's our bill, that it was done by the chosen company.
So, have any questions for Mr. Schwartz?
I would just like to say that I think it's a really generous offer. I want to thank our Bamboosers for having the foresight to... The impressive thing is that they pay it forward. The people who are purchasing, like, we're purchasing these Bamboos uniforms now, but the people who are working in the concession and working all these things and working all these fundraisers know that that's going for another twelve years. My kid won't even be in school, we are paying this forward. So I think that's, I think it's really commendable, and the Bamboosers work super hard.
I was kidding with Mr. Schwartz, because when he sent me this proposal, before reading it from the beginning, of course, I flipped it to the back and saw two hundred and thirty, almost two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I almost fell out of my seat. Then I read the rest of it and was pleasantly surprised, so. Thank you for your effort, and also that of the Bamboosers.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Platiko, you're up.
I know Mrs. Crissy mentioned some refinancing opportunity, I know we're real excited about that, but I have a few slides we're going to go through before we have Mike Brusella talk about that opportunity here. All right, so on the November fifth ballot this year, we have the Lake County School Financing District levy renewal. And I went through these slides back in March before we had that placed back on the ballot. So I figured it was a good time to kind of go through it one more time, made a few tweaks to the presentation, and since we kind of gone through this before, I'm going to go a little bit quickly through it, just so, you know, everyone's informed of what's on the ballot, and, you know, then we can know what their vote are. Okay, so, back in February sixth, nineteen ninety, a resolution was passed to create the Lake County School Financing District for the purpose of levying taxes, for provision of the following specified educational programs and services by the school districts that are part of that financing district. So it's for the necessary personnel, materials, supplies, and transportation for instruction in language arts, social studies, mathematics, fine practical arts, health and physical education, science, and business education. So Lake County Financing District is made up of Madison, Painesville City, Perry, and of course Riverside. Right here is the election history, it was originally passed in nineteen ninety, and has been renewed every five years ever since, all the way through two thousand and fifteen. And Riverside, the way we account for the funds here is we account for them in a separate fund called Fund Thirty. We include the funds in our five-year forecast in the all other operating revenues line. The other three districts in the financing district do not include it in their forecast, so we're trying to compare the districts, it's something we do a little differently. Since they're used for instructional expenses, we always thought this was included in the forecast, that we're pretty much like operational funds, but a little bit restricted to those certain purposes. We use it right now for teacher salaries at the Riverside campus only, approximately thirty-two teachers in English, math, science, and social studies. We do not use the levy funds for any benefits, material supplies, transportation expenses. Just makes the accounting easier. The current tax rate for tax year two thousand and eighteen, collection year two thousand and nineteen, which we pay now, the voted tax rate's four point nine mils, but for Class One, which is residential, it's two point two eight mils. So the annual cost for a hundred thousand dollar home is sixty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, and since this is an old budget, it's been being renewed, the, it still qualifies for the ten percent state rollback and the two-and-a-half percent owner-occupied credit, but taxpayers see that discount because the state pays that on the taxpayer's behalf. Class Two and Class Three, for commercial and public utility, are both collecting at the full four point nine mils. This is some valuation history here, it's a little hard to see, there's a lot of numbers up here. Showing the three different classes, so towards the left is Class One Residential, so you can see at the bottom, valuation is one billion five hundred and nineteen million. And you can see, over time, it went down during the Great Recession, but it's recovered, and now it's higher in two thousand and eighteen than it was in two thousand and ten. Commercial, on the other hand, and public utility have both gone down significantly over the years, and, which is why they're just still collecting at the four point nine mils, where residential is seeing at lower military. Annual revenue history here, this is looking at fiscal year basis, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, it just ended on June thirtieth. We received two million ninety-three thousand dollars from that levy, which was down four point eight percent from last year. You can see back in two thousand and ten, we were at two point, almost two point seven million, so we've been losing funds on the levy each year, and going down a little bit, which is why we changed the allocation for renewal, which I'll talk about here in a minute. So the current allocation of the current levy is Class One, and Class Two revenue is distributed based on each district's proportionate enrollment. Then Class Three is based on two-thirds on the enrollment and one-third on the valuation. Over time, as enrollment changes have happened, evaluation changes have happened throughout the districts, it's getting a little bit unbalanced, which is why we try to move things around a little bit. So the new allocation, if the levies renew November fifth, for tax year two thousand and twenty, which would be collection year two thousand and twenty-one, every district's going to get their proportionate share by valuation by class. So basically, whatever each district generates from the levy, they'll receive from the levy. This will result in an increase for Riverside, so you can see, like, estimated, if it was tax year two thousand and seventeen, collection year two thousand and eighteen, we should be receiving two point seven million as opposed to two point one million. This will protect Riverside, Painesville, Madison from future Perry Power plant devaluations, and it also protects all the districts from disproportionate changes in enrollment, you know, or changes in valuations under the current levy. So why doesn't Riverside just do their own levy instead of being part of the financing district, if everyone's getting the same allocation that they're, you know, they're getting the same amount they're generating? The issue is, if we put up a new levy on the ballot, it wouldn't qualify for the ten percent rollback or the two and a half percent owner-occupied credit, so residential taxpayers would be paying twelve and a half percent more than they would apparently to get the same amount. Also, if you did a new levy, the tax rate for all three classes would have to be the same, because it resets back to the voted mileage. So basically, the public utility, commercial would be lowered, and, you know, to what the residential is paying. Also, you know, to replace that levy, to get the two million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand that we received in two thousand and eighteen, it'd be about a one point nine four or five mil levy. Now, even though the current residential rates are two point two eight, but because of the loss in the homestead and the rollback, the rollback, the two and a half percent, the ten percent rollbacks, it would only be a decrease of a dollar sixty-eight per year for a hundred thousand dollar home. My previous presentation, I had an increase of a dollar something, but I was factoring in non-delinquency and some taxes don't get collected, and I was, because the county already uses ninety-six percent of the value to do that, and that's, I was using, but at a hundred percent of the collection, it'd be a slight decrease. And then, if we were doing a levy like this, it would, we wouldn't increase, we wouldn't see that increased revenue that we would see, just renewing the form now. Is this a renewal levy? Yes, it's a renewal levy, first approved in nineteen ninety, it's been renewed every five years ever since. It will not be an increase in taxes, this is a renewal, and with the current tax rate of two point two eight mils for residential taxpayers, and the renewals for a five-year period, it's not going to be continuous. So that's all ahead for the financing districts, anybody have any questions on that? It'll be on the ballot November fifth, and we have some of this information posted on our website there, so people can reference to that information.
The ballot, the levy that's on the ballot, sorry, is administered by the ESC, so it actually reads like it's an ESC levy, correct?
It will say Lake County School Financing District. It's on the ballot, it's issue three, I'm going to inform the board a week or two ago. The Board of Elections inadvertently assigned issue three to a Painesville City police levy, and also the financing district. So anybody who lives in the city of Painesville will have two issue threes on their ballot. They'll see the Lake County School Financing District first, and then the police levy second. Talking with Jan Clare at the Board of Elections, he said the issue number is pretty much for convenience, and by the time I brought it to their attention, it was too late for them to change it, because it was the Friday before the early voting started and all the absentee ballots had gone out. So it affects some of the Riverside voters, if you're in Heisey Park or Liberty Greens, they're in the city of Painesville, so they will see two issue threes on their ballot, but the rest of Riverside will only see the one issue three, and Perry and Madison, it doesn't affect them. Next up, we have Mike Brusella here, talk us out a potential refinancing opportunity for some bonds that you issued for Phase One of the construction project. So I think I'll just turn it over to Mr. Brusella that's here to kind of walk us through that, walk this through, the finance committee through this process, and so I'll let him take over and kind of explain it to the board, and then we'll go from there.
Appreciate it, Gary. There's been a unique move in interest rates recently, and certainly as everyone's heard in the news, where interest rates have dipped dramatically. So what this has created is an opportunity to refinance a large portion of the bonds that we issued in early two thousand and seventeen, from the election success of two thousand and sixteen. After two thousand and seventeen, the law changed in the municipal debt world, where you cannot refinance your bonds in advance of their prepayment date with tax-exempt bonds. But because these interest rates are currently so low, and the structure that we had implemented, the original tax-exempt bonds, to generate adequate cash flow for investors at such high, what we call coupon rates, we are able to refinance these bonds now in advance, but on a taxable basis. So tonight, in front of you, is a resolution to pass for moving forward and advanced refinancing the bonds from two thousand and seventeen with taxable bonds. Currently, this issue, that of all expenses associated with it, will generate between two to two and a half million dollars in savings over the life of the bond issued. The one drawback to this particular structure, though, is that now we are going to have to extend slightly by the two to three years, the new prepayment date. Whereas the original prepayment date was five years from the issuance, now we're going to take this one and make it eight years from this new issuance. So that does extend the time by which you can refinance these again on a tax-exempt basis. But again, if the new phenomenon were to occur, where these taxable rates were to be so low, we could enact an advanced refunding on a taxable basis, anytime before that call day. I know it's very complicated, it's...
And just to clarify, what Mr. Brusella's saying, the taxable portion is not taxable to the district, it's taxable to the investor. Investors buy tax-exempt bonds, they don't pay taxes on that interest income, but if it's taxable bond, they do.
That's correct, that's a good distinction, I appreciate you bringing it up here. So that's the main difference. The only, the good thing about that, though, are that investors in taxable debts are generally much more savvy than those who invest in tax-exempt debts. So you do have a much larger investor pool, which allows us to keep those rates even lower. So the resolution in front of you tonight is going to allow us to move forward on that refinancing, and we are not refinancing all of what we call the call of the portion of the debt. We're going to leave some, so that when the time comes for the current call, which will be in two thousand and twenty-two, we will still have the option to refinance a large portion of those bonds on a tax-exempt basis. So what we're doing is essentially creating a hedge, taking advantage of a bird in the hand, if you will. By rates being so low now, let's take advantage of the savings that are manifest in front of us, but saving a good portion of those opportunities for down the road, when the economics will be their best, tax-exempt to tax-exempt, instead of taxable to tax-exempt. It's a structure that's been utilized quite often, and the last time rates were like this, and we've done it for a number of districts, so we're in the midst of doing this for about ten districts currently. In the end, the bottom line is, it's going to be between two to two and a half million dollars in savings, and that comes directly off the assessments from the original issue that goes right into taxpayers' pockets.
Yeah, this resolution gives us the authority to move forward with this. What will happen next is we're updating the official statement, preliminary official statement, that basically it's a big statement about Riverside and the debt that we have currently outstanding, and then we'll go to Moody's to get rerated, see if we can get ratings increase, our, you know, financial condition is much better now than it was when we went two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, to get our initial rating, you know, issued, and then that will set us up for getting the pricing date set, and if, by the time we get there, which should be sometime later in November, probably maybe early December, if the market goes crazy, rates go back up, and we miss the opportunity, we're not obligated to refinance, we just pull the plug and we just did a bunch of work that, you know, utilizes, you know, get those savings. Another thing is, if we do qualify for ratings upgrade, when we go to Moody's and present to them again, that will set us up nicely for when we decide to move forward with the second phase, because if we have a higher rating, we will give lower interest rates when we issue our debt, which equates to a real estate for the taxpayers. So that's kind of the whole thing to nutshell, basically.
That's it. The last rating report that had us put it, what was it, A1 underlying rating, cited particular factors that kept us from the double A range, and I believe, over the last three years now, a lot of those indicators have improved, specifically the one that Mr. Platiko just put in front of you, with the new allocation to the levy that's going on for renewal on November fifth. An additional six hundred thousand dollars into the coffers for the district, along with the PI levy that was passed on a continuous basis. The district has set itself up for a very positive review, and I think there's a very good chance we can get that upgrade. So it's kind of a perfect storm situation, if we can get this going now, it allows you to show what you've been doing on a fiscal stewardship of the taxpayers' money, moving into the next phase of your capital plan.
And you mentioned that the interest rates now are almost the lowest they've ever been.
Correct. We are, we just over about twenty basis points over, so a basis point in terms of interest rate, one point five percent, one basis point up is one point five one percent. So the all-time low for the ten-year treasury, which is an index by which a lot of loans and long-term debt issues are indexed, its absolute low was at one point three nine percent. And we are currently, we were, when I came out here, a little lower, rates have backed up a little bit, but we are now currently at one point seven five percent. So we are right at the absolute lowest ten-year treasury rates have ever been. So that's why this taxable refinancing works. These rates have a window period, most economists are saying should last close through the end of the year. We've already started to make a move on putting the disclosure together. There is no commitment in passing this resolution, there is no commitment for putting this disclosure together. We can get up to the actual date that we want to go and price the debt bonds, and if the market is not there, we simply walk away. It's a part of flexibility that I may certainly implement in this whole situation, so that there is no cost to the district if the market doesn't comply. But the opportunity is certainly there, and it just sets everything up to move into your next phase of your capital plan.
Just let me ask a question. I mean, with what's going on, for people listening at home, I mean, this is almost akin to a housing refinance, right?
Exactly right.
So that's, that's all we're doing.
Simple as that. Unlike a housing refinance, where you actually have as many times as you'd like to do that, whenever you'd like to do that, investors don't want that to be happening all the time, but it's exactly the same situation. You borrow your mortgage at five percent, ten years into your mortgage... 10 years into your mortgage, you can get another mortgage for 3%. You have options to either continue paying on the same length of loan that's left at a lower interest rate, which saves you monthly. Or you can say, hey, now that I have much lower rate, I can actually lop off some years from my loan. And we do have that option here, but I think more importantly here would be the cash flow savings. So we're simply going out and getting a better interest rate for the bonds that were originally issued back in 2017.
And it's only part of the issue?
Only part of the issue. Approximately 46%. The underwriter had indicated that we wanted to have the flexibility to go for more bonds if the market were so compliant. But I've put kind of a soft stop to that because I really do believe we want to retain a good portion of the bonds outstanding. So when the time comes for the current call, we can use actual tax-exempt debt, and that will certainly amplify the savings at that time, the way those economics work. But instead of exposing all the debt to rate volatility through 2022, this is truly a bird in the hand situation.
I wanted you to paraphrase that.
But I appreciate that you know it.
So I can answer any questions about the resolution or moving forward that anybody needs?
Just anybody have any questions or the test?
I would feel the test, but I do appreciate that you do explain it in a way that's actually understandable. So, thank you.
Okay, I started working on the updating official statement this afternoon. Anticipation of the resolution being approved later. And just seeing, updating it from where we were in 2016 before we had the operating levy in 2017. Just seeing, you know, one of the sections is outstanding lease payments. And we had a lot of things planned, using the PI fund, that we couldn't afford immediately to get done. All those have been paid off at this point, except for there's one more payment next year for a bus loan. We did receive a bus back in 2014, '15. Looking at general fund cash balance at the time was 5.6 million. We were expecting a deficit two years later, and now we're at 12.7 million in this last fiscal year. So there's a complete drastic change from where we were. So I don't see a reason why it would get upgraded, but, you know, it's up to them, not to us. And we're going to clear our case and see.
Do you have to make an appointment with them? Like, what's the deal?
So once, if you pass resolution, that would be kind of our green light to move forward. And then I would make an appointment with them once we have that disclosure statement, the preliminary official statement. And pretty much, I'd say 90% of its finality. And then we do make an appointment with them, and that would be a face-to-face presentation.
Yeah, and there's so many things that have improved since then, market conditions, you know, the county market conditions, housing starts. They look at all that information. You know, what companies are doing and what their profits are doing in this area. So they, they looked at, they looked at everything. And I think, like, if I can remember correctly, like, almost everything that was in that disclosure statement that we discussed when we went up there was, like, point for point, things are in much better condition now.
Big time, especially the economic development improvements right there on Route 44. A lot of those that we put in were rather fresh, so they had no history behind them. Now we can show taxable value incremental increase, and that's significant. And the numbers that Mr. Placo showed before, we have gotten out of what is basically what the analysts have called that Great Recession black hole. And everyone's kind of starting to peek over that. We've jumped out of that here with a nice big jump in assessed valuation in excess of our 2010 levels. So that's very important as well, especially almost over doubling your carryover balance.
And I just want the board to recognize that, that what, to me at least, in my opinion, what's really exciting about this is the fact that it could totally reduce your mileage. If you get a better bond rating, it, it reflects in your mileage significantly because of your interest rates. And so that would be really valuable to the taxpayers here.
And there it equates to, everyone has an individual credit score that you go with when you buy a home, lease a car, ask for credit on anything, same situation. The higher your credit score, the more flexible your financing terms are and the better rates you get on repaying. It was simple as that.
Awesome.
Thank you, okay.
Thanks, Mike.
One more thing I wanted to go over real quick, was just an update on our state funding formula. You know, obviously we're a new budget. But whenever the new budget gets passed, it takes a few months for OD to update their payment reports to make sure everything is correct. Just kind of wanted to show you an example. In the past, the funding report showed lines A through M. So our state funding was, you know, our typical dollar amount per student. And you get economic disadvantaged funding, little English proficiency, gifted education, transportation, special education, graduation bonus, third grade reading bonus. You see all these things. Now with the new budget, you're locked at that same funding level for the next two years. So now your funding formula is this line A, which equals to what that amount is from the end of last year. So what that means is if you have an increase in special ed students, you don't get additional funding. If you have a decrease in special ed students, you don't lose any funding. If you have an increase in transportation costs, you get additional funding. Same thing of a decrease. So now there's really no formula anymore. Just here's a set out. One of the things that they didn't mention going through this line of budget, there's always a few additional aid items now. As we talked about, we get those student success and wellness funds. We're expecting $184,000. That's an additional aid item. What, they updated the calculation on special education transportation funding. So last year, we received $225,000 in special ed transportation funding. Now, as it's been updated on this payment, we only get $123,000. So we lost $102,000 in special ed transportation funding, which is a decrease of 45.5% on that line item. And then when you factor in some of the other transfers and adjustments, like the Docks Charter Schools and open enrollment STEM school funding, scholarships, all that stuff from our funding. We saw an increase in STEM school transfer out of $75,000 going to the high STEM high school. But like, community school funding, there's less students in our district going to community schools, so that went the other way. But if you look at the total net funding, once you take all these adjustments, we went from $6,124,000 to $6,91,000. So we actually went down a half a percent, about $33,000 with the state budget. Those numbers will vary throughout the year as students enroll and charter schools or come back, things like that. But I thought I would point out that, you know, the special ed transportation funding loss of $102,000 is not expected with this budget. And so pretty much, we're almost about the same as we were last year, even though we're getting this $184,000 of student wellness funds.
Anybody have questions on that? And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. It takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requesting to identify themselves. And their topic comments are limited to three minutes.
Yes, Cynthia?
Cynthia Mahoney, I'm here on the House of the Band Boosters. I just wanted to mention quickly, Dave did a great job of sort of breaking down how all this works. The Band Booster Organization, when I came to it two years ago, kind of blew my, blew me out of the water because I came from the PTO and then what Band Boosters do. He understated the state of the uniforms. I have worked in fittings. I also have one of the uniforms in my basement. And there's times I would say I would rival, rival my husband's hockey gear, depending on how wet it gets. The biggest issue is the raincoats, which is of course what we're asking you guys to help finance. We have large coats. We have small kids. These kids are marching, playing music, standing in temple, hitting their marks, all that kind of stuff. It rains and they're wet, and they're in a raincoat that is three times the size they are sometimes. Like, we do our best to get them in the right size, but we often don't have that option. So my daughter, her first year, wore an extra-large coat. She is not a big girl. So her playing the bells with this raincoat made it a little more difficult for her. So we really appreciate you guys considering this because it would be huge for the band. Because when we go on the road, we're impressive, as you see. And we do a good job, I think we do a good job representing the district when we go places. And we are in this for the, of these new uniforms. So we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Actually, you did a great job.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. It takes us to consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first thing up is finance and audit.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through K. Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on these items? If not, I will read.
Read the donations, please.
I will at least read the donations here. So we have some funding from Greg and Peggy Udam to the Riverside Veterans Memorial. We have some funds from the Painesville Credit Union to Riverside Rocks 5K, Riverside Cheerleading, from Step 1 All-Stars North to Riverside Cheerleading and from Parkside PTO to cover the cost of the Parkside Assembly. So we want to thank those organizations for donating. Is there any other discussion on any of these items that are in the finance model? Nat, can we call the roll?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Flindegressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through H. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? All right, well, Nat, can we call the roll?
Flindegressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yep. We have a resolution to approve the athletic recommendations as attached to our schedule. I have a second.
Second.
If there's no discussion on those items that were in the attachment, can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
I'm staying.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Flindegressi?
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to the Board of Education update. If anyone has any, what?
Something else?
Board of Education update. I would like to congratulate Dan Weiner. His eighth-grade football team had an undefeated season. Really exciting.
I had the greatest group of kids. I had the greatest group of parents. I bow right here on the party planner. And we, we, we just had a great night. And I walked out the other night after school and Scott and myself go, what are we going to do? Go home and sit in a chair. But we had a great season and the kids were amazing. And it's why you do what I do. So it was fun.
Sorry about Scott being the one.
Yeah. And Jeff Merritt was there.
And Jeff Merritt, won't forget him. We'll hear about that tomorrow.
Yeah. Yeah, this group of kids was undefeated in their seventh grade year and their eighth grade year and undefeated in basketball. And the same group is together and doing a new basketball season. So they're, they're a fun grade to watch.
Fun group. Not one issue all year long. It was just fun.
They had a good time.
I got a great gift of a spoon. That was great with Riverside football because I eat everything with a spoon. The kids couldn't think of anything that I didn't eat with a spoon.
And they challenged you, right?
They challenged me every day.
Spaghetti?
Choo-choo wheels. I'm ready for you. I answered it. They're chewing eggs every day. They go, what about spaghetti? I go, choo-choo wheels. They go, what's choo-choo wheels? So anyway, that's what I do for a living. It was great stuff.
Congratulations. It was, it was really fun here. It was really cool as the cheerleading coach to be with Dan, actually, because he is probably one of the most inspiring guys I've been around. I mean, these kids just absolutely love him and really respond to him. He is, it was such a phenomenal season to get to be a part of that with him.
We learned the fight song from the cheerleaders.
We did.
They sang it old-school coming down the hill. After we won, the kids all busted out on the bus and...
They did.
Or a tear in my eye.
And we did it on the 50-yard line after the final game when we won. And all sang it together. It was fun.
Good stuff. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Speaking of the band, when's the band show with the season ending?
The end of season concert?
Yes.
November 6th.
Which I encourage every of you to come to that, even if you're not a band parent. It's really fun. Totally fun. I'm coming.
We're making sessions.
I won't be there. I'm not for that.
I start saving for the band uniform.
We are starting next week.
All right. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add? All right, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:05 PM to talk about purchase or sale of property. If I could have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Can we call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Flindegressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.
It's a Wednesday.